Welcome everyone in the council chambers and everyone watching remotely to this special meeting of the Delrayo City Council. Our city attorney Alex Lorca is not physically here with us today, however, he is online. So if you have any legal questions that come up, you can address them. So with that, roll call please.
Councilmember Uli, Preston, councilmember Hallack, councilmember Shirley, Mayor Donaldson.
Here, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Public comment must deal with matters subject to jurisdiction of the city and the council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city can only matter if not appearing on the agenda may do so now. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered. There will be a time limit of not more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken on matters brought up under this item and all comments will be referred to staff. So just to clarify, if your comment is regarding the council appointment, you'll have the opportunity to do that once we open up that idea. With that public comment.
Okay, my name is Irene Porcini and I really want to say councilmember Shirley and councilmember Uli. For last meeting on the twenty eighth because I don't have the meeting and it was a purpose. I thank you for being there for the speak to your guns because you know you have an opinion. You did, you had choices, you made concessions, but nobody else. So that's fine. We support you. And what else can I do? And please go forward with whatever happens. Don't go backward. That may vary anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comments? Okay, public comment is closed. Next item is new business. City council member vacancy, possible action to make an appointment to fill a vacancy for the main term. And administer the open office to the newly appointed council member or call a special election for November seventh, twenty twenty-three as per election code. What I'll do is turn it over to the city manager to give the procedure.
Thank you, man. Just to clarify the procedure. So this is a continuation of the process of a winter of the last meeting. At the last meeting with the interview, then came back to the council for deliberation or a continuation of the deliberation should the council. Why maintain you for lack of better. So that's the council, how you want to proceed, but we have to continue with the process, follow the process. So there won't be questions of the candidate. You've already been through that. You've been through the interview process. There won't be an opportunity for you to speak or anything like that. And then if it's up to the council, if you can't reach an agreement on appointment, then calling a special election is the only next option that we have. So the appointment process, if we don't reach, if you all don't reach consensus on appointments, which is fine, then this is our last day to file special election. The special election will be scheduled for Tuesday, November seventh. If there's any good news on all of this, first time I've ever seen it in my career, estimated charges from the county actually went down, which I've never seen. So the estimated costs, the top end would be twenty-five thousand dollars, which is much better than what we were estimating going into this process. It's actually five thousand dollars less than it would have cost us two years ago. So if anybody has any questions, I can get into the details of how that's all calculated, but suffice it to say around twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so at this time, were there any questions about process from any of the council members? No question. Okay, the next step is public comment. Once again, we'll open it up for three minutes per speaker, nine minutes for speaker. I ask you to maintain the forum and treat each other with dignity and respect as you're making your comments and as you listen here in the council chambers. But with that, I'll open it up to public comment. There any public comment?
Good evening. My name is Anna Taman. I live on ten fifty-five Fortuna is that house in Fortuna and Quinnet. And we've been working with Omosia and Hattner. And we are new here. In my wife last week talked and I did send an email to the council. I hope you received it. I responded. I got a response from the mayor and Ms. Shirley. But I believe that I think the best way to forward at this moment is, you know, I made the suggestion last week in my email, which is was not acceptable. And my suggestion now is just you appoint us. There is a fifty fifty possibility between, I think it was Gary and Miss, am I right? Fifty fifty possibility of chance, one of those two people will get, and it's only twenty months. There's only twenty months left. But for the next twenty months, there is a good possibility, if you go for election, there might be the same fifty fifty chance somebody has one game. So you might as well have a council person sitting by doing the appointments. And there are a lot of places that do the appointments. And that's it.
Thank you.
I'm Vicki Lucino at Tuas Satio Avenue. The most recent election in our city showed us that the majority of voters wanted change of leadership. Now with that change of leadership, our four council members has filled that open seat as a result of the majority vote. One for another, in these weeks, all four of the current council members have supported the idea of Louise Getzel filling that seat. For some reason, two of those current council members have rescinded that idea and now stand away of our city filling that seat. It seems hypocritical to reverse support from Louise Getzel just because it doesn't suit the particular personal agenda. We've got issues that need to be addressed in the city. Tonight, this council can get us going in the right direction and we can do it together. Louise Getzel is more than competent. She's experienced, she has integrity, and maybe most of all, she's the voice of reason that can help bridge the divide we all know that exists in the city, in our city. Please be the one who sees this opportunity to do what's right. You know it, they know it, and the voters know it. Don't be that person who gets us, gets into outside forces. Be the person who's looking out for our city. That's what you're elected to.
Mr. I did not attend the twenty-fourth meeting, but there is a letter here that states that a councilman member, which is Mr. Holok, said he couldn't vote for somebody because he had no prior council experience. I would have thought it was very official that somebody didn't. And that somebody new came to the dais to be able to think of new ideas. We had an election. We had a great turnout compared to most years. The county member Louise, who I know, wasn't elected. She lost by a fair amount. She's also served on the council and has a track record. And so people have wanted her that came out to vote, which was over nine hundred people. Surely she would have won the election. And should, and maybe it's time for new blood on this council. My comment.
My name is Remy Folling, fourteen-year-old wife. I read off of the January twenty-fifth letter that was on the table, addressed to Mayor Donaldson. Thank you for your response. At that last meeting, I'm paraphrasing to make sense here. I listened with an open mind and took note as all six candidates made their statements and answered countless questions. At the conclusion of the interviews, I came to believe that Bill Ragsel Cronin is the best person to vote vacancy. He was the only candidate who discovered himself as a centrist. He was the only candidate who spoke studying the issue coming before the council and making up his own mind. He was the only candidate who addressed neutrality and his prior history of speaking his own mind, even when it was off. I've been on that opposite side of that thing and don't feel he's the best person in this council. The only reason that I heard from you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Hallack for not voting for him was that Mr. Ragsel Cronin does not have prior council experience. Now, neither you, Mr. Mayor, nor Ms. Shirley, had prior council experience, and elected in twenty twenty. Both of you learned quickly and became effective council members. The charge of Mr. Ragsel Cronin's lack of experience completely evaporated when you, when both of you, when both you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Hallack, adamantly pressed that the choice had to be between the last two applicants standing. That was before the other four applicants withdrew from competition. Now having listened to that meeting again and giving the additional and giving issue additional thought, I allow the opinion that a special election is the only way this seat, this seat shouldn't fill. In fact, it is my opinion that it is the best way to fill the position. You are an elected body. Let the candidates step up and let the voters vote. Thank you.
We're gonna stand right here. I'm Grover Longrose. Most of you, those who do know me, know me as the vociferous advocate for the product and for the natural world of Delrayo, which is a great part of Delrayo. And usually I hold out for the ideal candidate that is one that's supportive. But in this case, I believe that both of the candidates were more or less opposed to the positions I've had lately in Delrayo. That being said, I think it's important for the city of Delrayo to actually have a governing force in place for the next couple of years. And I've checked on the couple of candidates that we have here. Spoke for one of them, and I think that either one of them would be a reasonable choice. But I think the important thing is to actually make a choice. Instead of leaving it open for an election and leaving the city unguided in that respect for the next year, I think it's important. Or the city, there's a lot of important decisions to be made. It would be very good to have full complement of representatives who can make that decision in a reasonable way. So I would encourage you to compromise, not usually a word in my vocabulary, but in this case, I think compromise is in order. And I would encourage you to take that plan and make a decision tonight for one of these candidates, either one of you. Thank you.
My name is Frank Lucido from Tuas Satio Avenue. And I want to talk about just the facts. We all know our city's divided and that's a fact. We also know the majority of voters in the last election wanted a new mayor, and that's a fact. About a week ago, several applicants were eligible for the open spot on the council, and the council could have appointed one of those applicants. But only one of those applicants received hundreds of votes in the most recent election. Together with at some point in time, support from all four of the current council members. That person is Louise Getzel, and that's a fact. Almost four hundred votes she received from the voters here in Delrayo. Louise Getzel is honest and balanced. She's the right person for this open seat. The council has the power to fill that seat and get to work. So why was support for Louise Getzel rescinded by a couple of council members recently? The voters want to know that. The voters don't want to hear spin because you can't spin what's best for our city. This isn't about Democrats or Republicans or liberals or conservatives. It's about our city. After tonight, you're all going to have to look yourself in the mirror and ask yourself, did I do what's best for our city? Or did I vote out of spite because the recent election didn't go the way I wanted it to? Am I going to support the mayor's leadership? Or am I going to stall and control the process? And prevent efforts that we need to get to work? Am I going to cost the city tens of thousands of dollars on a needless election? Will I honor the campaign promises that I made? Those are the questions you're going to have to ask yourself after tonight. And more importantly, are we going to waste the next ten months of progress just because we don't want to support the ideas of this new administration? So do the right thing tonight and support Louise Getzel. And do the job you were elected to do. The voters of the city are watching. The majority of voters are watching what you do next, and that's a fact.
Hello, Manny's for Workout here. I have been here at the last couple of council meetings and I have heard a lot of questioning about why votes were not taken when this previous support. And what I have seen is that there was context around that support. There was context because there was motions, there were votes taken. Those votes did not support the motions. There's consequences to those votes. You don't get to go back in time and redo something and say there's no consequence, you know, context. Context is important. What's also important is compromise. Compromise doesn't mean you just push for somebody to go to your side. You look for common ground. Okay, I also heard the candidates and the applicants give their statements. I was really very supportive of Mr. Ragsel Cronin. And I really enjoyed what he had to say. So what I would say is that all of us who are coming up here and speaking to you, we are sharing our own thoughts. We do not support a majority of voters in the city, and so we're sharing our own thoughts. Thank you very much for taking this vote tonight. Hopefully you will get some credit.
I'm going to read a letter that Jim Park sent to me and asked me to read. I think it's in your package, but I also think that, I don't know, Karen, did you get that distributed to them? This is Jim Park from Via Verde in Delrayo. After witnessing the city council meeting on January fourth, I think that was fifth, I believe we may have forgotten the actual definition of the word diversity. I say that because of the following. At approximately thirty-six minutes into the video meeting, Ragsel Cronin is asked how, even though it's the twenty-fourth. How was asked how he would demonstrate diversity at the twenty-fourth. His reply is that he is very, he is the very definition of diversity because he has an LBGQ cutout. When it goes to the council for discussion after that, Mr. Uli says, seeing that Mr. Ragsel Cronin accepts his child, that is why, quote, that is why he has my strong support to be on the council. That is called affinity bias and is the very antithesis of diversity. I am not sure how that quality helps in balancing a budget, bringing in business, planning a major subdivision, or anything else under the curfew of the council. But let's back up a minute and see what diversity really means. Diversity is not defined by sexual preference alone. Diversity means having a range of people with various racial, ethnic, socioeconomic, and cultural backgrounds and various life styles. Experience and interests. It's not defined by sexual preference alone. Appreciating diversity has little to do with what you have in your family. It has to do with how you treat people that are different than you. We already have LGBTQ representation on the council in John Uli, but they, he demonstrated to me his bias, I think he said Kim Shirley to me, but I don't, that's his comment. I'm going to read it the way he said it, Kim Shirley. But they demonstrated to me their bias rather than diversity by choosing the two applicants who have similar life experiences with LBGQ. They overlooked or deflated the following. One, that Bill Ragsel Cronin's city government experience, especially Louise Getzel's. Two, during the interview, Louise Getzel stated a broader range of dealing with people of racial, ethnic, socioeconomic, and cultural backgrounds that either, that been either Bill or Gary Krieger. And they acknowledged the fact that on January fifth, they stated that Louise Getzel would be a good person in the seat. Okay, now I need a few minutes of my own time. First of all, I want to apologize to the council for the way I rudely left this last meeting.
Sorry, folks.
I do apologize for that. I was extremely agitated by the inaction that was taken. I believe that you are all fundamentally good people. I believe that a few citizens can understand or appreciate the personal sacrifices that you're making as city council members. And contrary to my last statement on January fifteenth, I would have been very pleased to serve on the council with you alongside all of you and in the position that was being needed by staff. I would have served two years with the same honesty and integrity that I have served fourteen years as an elected official here on this council. And I'd be happy to, in the next general election, the city citizens to determine who the city council member should be. As a council member, I believe you will all have to put aside your own personal problems, bias, and turn your thoughts to what is best for the city and the Delrayo. I heard that again from this other gentleman back here. I sincerely hope that he can do that. I want to also comment on something I saw in next door that I just found amazing. Somebody had the unmitigated gall, I'll put it that way, to say that this is Scott Donaldson's fault. Because Scott Donaldson got elected mayor. He shouldn't have run for mayor, is what they said. He should not have run for mayor. This plaza is safe to be open, and this is Scott Donaldson's fault. How crazy is that? So I'm not accusing any of you of that. I'm just telling you that this was something I hear that I found very bizarre. Tells you a lot about how the city has become so divided. And when did it become divided? It became divided four years ago. So this last election stated that Scott Donaldson is our mayor. I think every council member has a responsibility to try and work with Scott Donaldson, our mayor. Each our leader needs to work with Scott. Whatever choice you make tonight, let's pray that it's the right choice and we have the right person in there. Personally, I think either one of these candidates is fine. There's no problem with Bill Ragsel Cronin, and I do think that Louise is the right choice to be in.
Karen, so the road. And I'm just up here to let you know that I believe that Bill Ragsel Cronin makes a perfect candidate in this situation. I've known him for probably thirty-four years or so, and we have been friends. We have been working on the side. We've been adversaries. We worked many times together at the monitoring one, the monitoring one water, working as the employees, bargaining group representatives. They only had two reps, so we worked together. It was very contentious sometimes, but we worked it out and we were able to to come to agreement most of the time. And so I'm just trying to say that he has a mind of his own. And I think he is also with his experience with water. And makes work of the parking monitoring one water for thirty-five years or something. He would be an excellent choice to be a representative on that board. Or at least provide some kind of support for whoever is on the board. So Louise has been on the board before, but I think it's time for somebody new. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tris Beckon on Satio Avenue. I don't know who else might have said this on next door, but I know that I did say it on next door. But the reason we're here this evening is in fact because Scott Donaldson showed to give up his seat on the council. It's the reality. You can laugh, you can be impolite.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to go ahead. I'm going away to the talking slots.
Conversation in the background. Thanks.
And of course, you have every right to do that. It's your democratic way, and I don't dispute it in any way, shape, or form. But it did leave the membership seat. That's the reality of things. You ran, Mr. Donaldson, on a platform of Indian divisiveness. If you really stand on that platform and you really want to keep that promise, you have such a great opportunity to do so this evening. Bill Ragsel Cronin is a moderate. He is not a progressive. As the last speaker said, he has a mind of his own. He can think for himself. The right thing we need to do this evening is to appoint Bill Ragsel Cronin. I've heard the scuttlebutt from the Oaks about Louise Getzel. We have not respected there and she has not liked her. She has not done a good job with she is on the HOA and what I have heard. I do not know this personally. I would really like to also, at the last point, clarify what Minister Osora said when he was here. That when there was an option for a direct appointment in the first meeting in this series of meetings, Ms. Shirley made a motion, which was to offer it to Allison Kerr, and if Allison Kerr turned it down, then to offer it to Louise Getzel. The council chose not to do that. She made that motion in a very specific context, not in a general one, but has not wavered by not choosing to support Louise Getzel. Thank you.
Good evening. Chris Foley, Road. I'm here to voice my support for Bill Ragsel Cronin. Known Bill for thirteen years. I worked with him for almost nine years, and we're also good friends. And I just think Bill has integrity. He has teamwork. He has an understanding of the issues. I would say he has a lot of experience, though. He was a mentor of mine when we worked together at monitoring one water, and he taught me how to do government budgeting, prepare reports for board, work with other county agencies, cities. Someone experienced that. He understands all the issues. And I trust Bill to do what's right for the city. And he has some of the experience and knowledge. And I just don't think the city would be missing out on that in a point bill. So I just voiced my support and appreciate your time. Thank you. So I just voiced my support and uh, appreciate your time. Thank you. You may recount. Well, I was speaking, but just listening here, I guess, so uh, come on, we got, we got, sorry, Gary Creer, we went down. When we come up and just make a few more comments. Some of them are sort of echoing what is already just said, um. Keep hearing a lot about the uh, mandate, the majority speaking. I just like keeping in mind last election. Mayor Donaldson went fair and square, but it was four percent. I mean, it was pretty close. Uh, and we all know it was a measure B reduction. It was, that really was what was going on. And we knew that. It was a measure B and Mayor's purse support for that cost to her. The election, she had been incoming over sixty percent. Was reelected two years ago, to over seventy percent, hardly a divided city. Her support, that's, that's politics, that's fine. But we need to be careful about how we raise this, about what's really going on. There's, yeah. And as Mr. Reese is just saying, um, there was a lot of context for, for me about uh, Council committee and people changing their minds. But again, it's important to realize that was within a specific context, a specific motion. Doesn't carry on to a different process, a different motion. So it's not really fair that they changed their minds with the different motions. They are going to handle that second motion in a different way than they can. And uh, last thing, I just, you know, everyone keeps imploring everyone to do the right thing. And I just, I mean, there's two on one side and two on the other. It's, you know, I feel like I'm breaking up on the middle school fights. It's like I get to school, right? It's just, you know, there's no, I can only give what's happening right here, right now, right in front of us. And what we have is two people, that's for one candidate, two for the other. We don't go to, if you come to a consensus, it goes to a special race. That's fifty-fifty. That's evenly shared, like. Two people aren't even more responsible than the other two. No matter your support. So, yeah, so let's, I'm kind of up overly trying to shame people on the, they get, they're the ones responsible. It's fifty-fifty. We got two on each side and they're, they're going to hold their positions. If they, if they hold positions, that's right. That's, that's their right. Not wrong with that. But we shouldn't be assigned blame for either side. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Palavolo Angeles Way. And first off, what I'm going to say has nothing to do with either candidate. It has to do more with the process. We started a process um, at the last meeting. And Mr. Cronin was eliminated and Louise Getzel was eliminated. Then we get to the next two and the council members were told, choose between these two. And because that very simple thing wasn't followed, we're here now. We had Mr. Louie who said, I support Andy Clark. And then, council member Shirley decided she was going to pull somebody out that wasn't even in the choosing. And then the mayor and council member Halleck did compromise and said, yes, we can work with Mr. Clark. And then Mr. Louie, who seems to puppet and parrot everything that Shirley does, decided, oh no, I no longer support Andy Clark, although he supported him, you know, two minutes prior. And the question wasn't, is that your favorite person? The question was, can you support this person? So I have an issue with, you could support somebody two minutes prior, but then can't support them later because they're not your favorite. That wasn't the question. And that's the same goes with Louise Getzel. Yes, the context changed, but how do you support somebody one week and not another? That being said, this process is extremely flawed. And this council is supposed to be our elected officials. Since the process is so flawed, I would like to see us go to a special election. One of the things that's nice about an election is we're not under the gun and we don't just hear the answers to four questions. The media gets to ask questions. The person who entered the campaign, they bet it in some ways. Whether it be a next door or the weekly or the Herald, like, hey, did you hear this about Bill and Hillary or did you hear this? It's not an immediate process. There's a betting theory. So I'm impoliting guys to go with the special election. Let the citizens of this city decide who and what they want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was, well, run for, yours. It brings me no joy to call out others in a public forum. But in times wherein I feel it vital to at least attempt to hold focus on the capital, including myself, to our words and actions. It demonstrates one's intent and character. Delrayo is down to two candidates for the final city council seat, having the experience with both candidates. There's a clear choice for the health and sustainability of this town. I've lived at the Oaks condominium for the past five years. Only one of these candidates has been the board president and member of the governing body of our homeowners association. While it is often a thankless challenge to live in this position, Louise Getzel has made few residents content with her dismissive bullying ways and dealing with legitimate concerns, but no sharing the same space. Same by law, standing chain of commandment. I witnessed and been the recipient, being talked down to while addressing issues that come up. When others offer solutions, Louise routinely finds obstacles. Right? To get leadership is to shut down opposing viewpoints, often preferring to belittle those who show up. The expected and congruent prank loses. If you're not happy with things, join our leadership team. It never sounded rewarding to me coming. Contrary, I found Bill Cronin, who is a listener, not always agreeing with my perspective, yet able and willing to articulate with stocks without disparaging others. Those are qualities I appreciate and would like to see leading our town. I prefer to have a perspective, city council members, jokes, and therapy, consideration, patience, and empathy. These are qualities that hold value in my life. And hopefully the Delrayo's leadership holds and demonstrates similar values. I'm an elementary school teacher in this community. When our school community experienced a case of bullying, it's incumbent upon the adults to be solution oriented and end the bullying. When it happens, we've been adults. Here we are. How many of us are asking for authentic governance over being bullied and dismissed? Therein lies the answer to this wonder. Let's see leadership diminish devices by appointing Bill Cronin to the Delrayo City Council.
Um, my name is Susan Wood, Miller Baxter Place. I wasn't planning on saying anything this evening. But having attended the three meetings relating to this issue and listening to what people have said tonight, I think all of us will agree that there is definitely some acrimony that has occurred. And people's emotions have gotten very high about what's going on. I don't think that we should be hopefully having an election because of the expense in a city that already has budgetary restrictions. Or I won't say restrictions, but concern, I guess. Um, and I did like what our neighbor here had to say. Because um, about flipping the coin, because I thought, I mean, there may be a reason you can't do that, but it seems to me that if we have one discussion where all of the council members have a discussion, take a vote, and if it's so deadlocked, then flip a coin because what I'm hearing is there are people who are pro candidates. And there seem to be some consensus that if it comes out for maybe um, are fairly equally balanced. So I don't know if you can do that, but that would be my suggestion, is that we try and do away with some of that money. And not create further divisiveness, like I'm a dead heart. And on this if possible, and if not, flip the coin and be done with it and hope for the best.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm third, nine, two, six, Angeles Way. Uh, I just wanted to say, I think the last meeting had six candidates. One was just absolutely exceptional. I, I know pretty much all the applicants except for Mr. Verder and I, most of them are my friends. I've known Bill. Our kids have gone to school since kindergarten. Gary was my kid's math teacher and Louie was my friend as well.
Really?
I, I think I disagree with what uh, the C manager said, that this is the continuation of the process. I think you can question, but we're making motion and do that, but I'll leave that. I'm not an attorney. I'll leave that, the legal to decide that. Um, but I think it's important to make a decision tonight. Um, my feelings aren't hurt. Maybe some are. We all get over it. I think it's important that we come to a decision. Great if you manage it. If not, that's the way the system works. And I think it's a fun process. That's why I came to be entertaining. Thank you.
Now, Rich Davis from uh, good old Rich Davis, good old Angeles Way. I agree with everything my neighbor said, everything Mr. Alice Allion said, everything Mr. Lucino said, Mr. Clark. If you guys can't come to some kind of decision, I also agree with my good friend right here, flip a coin. Because you can't come to any agreement. That's the way to do it. Or go to election and cost, spend much money. If an acquaintance makes you look very good, but maybe that's the only way to go.
Thank you.
May I have some letters to read?
Yes. Are there any other comments from inside of Jager's? Okay, Karen, go ahead.
This letter is from Michael Bryan on Borg Avenue. When any employer is in the process of hiring an employee, they look at, look for experience. If they are serving their company correctly, they would look at a resume with lots of experience. That would weigh heavily on their decision to hire. With the appointment of council member, the process should be no different. I looked at both Louise Getzel and William Ragsdale Cronin's applications and it is very apparent and obvious to me that Louise has more experience with the city. She has been a council member with DRO in the past. William Ragsdale Cronin has some experience, but not as much as Louise Getzel. Voting for someone with less experience is not serving the city to pick the best candidate. Not sure why anyone would vote for someone with less experience. Please make the right decision. I've got another one too. I'll be there. Okay, and this is from Kristen Clark on Via Verde. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm writing this letter in support of Louise Getzel. Louise is an excellent candidate for open council. Here are a few positive reasons to consider her. Louise showed initiative and she ran in the current election. Louise has previous experience as a councilperson. The current makeup of the council now is inexperienced and Louise would be an excellent balance. Louise is a leader. She is, she was the president of the Oaks condominiums for seven years and is currently the vice president. A voice from a local that would be beneficial. Not everyone in leadership is always going to be liked a hundred percent, but she has always tries to do the right thing. Louise continues to represent us on the mosquito abatement board. Her dedicated experience in the military retiring currently shows leadership and excellent character. In her military career, she has had to deal with many different cultures and people from different socio-economic status. At the January fifth council meeting, Kim Shirley showed an enormous amount of support for Louise. This support was given freely by Kim. Louise is in excellent hea- Louise is in excellent health and there is no question that she could fulfill her duties if appointed. Louise currently serves on the planning commission and has performed her duty as well. I cannot understand why Kim Shirley or John Louie would deny her the opportunity, except for political reasons. While Bill Ragsdale Cronin is a nice person and candidate, I would be concerned about his health and now that it would affect supporting the majority of the citizens and choose the obvious choice for this open position, Louise Getzel.
Is that the last letter, Karen?
That's the last letter.
One last opportunity, any other further public comment? Okay, public comment is now closed. I'm ready to pass to the council. Um, and I'll start with council member Halleck. Do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do. So we have two applicants before us and thank you very, uh, both very much for offering yourself and service to the community. Uh, both are recognized as uh, qualified for the position um, with relative experience. And um, as many members of the public have spoken to, uh, and I agree, uh, they are both of a strong character and personal value. Um, I would just like to um, kind of recap what we've heard from both uh, applicants. Um, so starting with Mr. Ragsdale Cronin, we know of him that uh, he served our city well with uh, a little over two years experience on our planning commission. And uh, it was mentioned in our last meeting that he does indeed attend every city council meeting. So he, he is involved in that uh, on a civil and civic level. Um, many have spoken his experience occasionally, um, thirty-one years of experience uh, with M one water board and uh, in service in Marina. Uh, otherwise, uh, I know of no other uh, community service commitments to the city. And um, there's any one area of concern, there was although endorsement voiced by council member Shirley and Healy in our previous meeting. Uh, it was preceded with uh, some skepticism and reluctance and a, a final um, gesture of uh, to the effect of, but I'd be willing to work with him, which is uh, which is greater. Concerning Mrs. Getzel, um, again, when I, to repeat what I said in our last meeting, Mrs. Getzel has decades of community service uh, to country and community. She maintains service on boards irregardless of her um, appointments or representation of the city. She does so of her own free will voluntarily. She has experienced on the city council and in the planning commission. Uh, I strongly believe that she would lend a very balanced and inclusive representation on council. But as a she/her woman. Um, I think the geographic representation is very important. Uh, I reside on the south side. I speak with fifteen, I make myself available, personally available, fifteen to twenty neighbors each and every day. Uh, just by walking my neighborhood. We have Mayor Donaldson centerwise on the north side. Council member Uli and council member Shirley to the west and east respectively. And Louise Getzel would offer that geographic representation uh, residing in the Oaks, making herself available therein. One thing that's very important to me, uh, that I take strong note of is that when the city called for um, for representatives, for people to serve their community uh, later last year, Louise Getzel stepped up and did just that. She answered the calling, led a great service in timely order. She campaigned. She knocked down seven hundred and twenty plus doors. She spent the time, the energy, and the money. Uh, and uh, three hundred and seventy-six people appreciated that and gave her their vote, myself included. Both candidates. state a position of neutrality, a moderate view. No other considerable alignments. I've heard the word centrist. This is to be affected and actually a requirement for any of us that sit on this council to maintain a neutral and moderate. Despite what our own beliefs may be, they are left outside of these chambers and we think holistically for the entire community, listening to all, hearing all. And and so that's wonderful that they both, they both possess those qualities. In fairness, since there was one negative comment towards Mr. Ragsdale Cronin. I have heard, council member Shirley stated, as we've just heard from a resident at the Oaks, that a few people at the Oaks disagree with her. Not in her defense, but I can't remember one HOA that any resident of any community has ever been entirely pleased with. So that's obviously a matter of contention there, but it's important for me to know that I know neither, I know that I I've been in the community for twelve years, I hear friendships, acquaintance going back several decades. I know neither applicant on a personal level. I've never been there on board, lived into mine, we don't attend social events together in any way, shape or form, I know nothing about their families, I don't know their favorite color, what they had for dinner last night, and even if I did, if it was similar to my own, I cannot make my decision based on such values because according to our city's code of conduct, which I have familiarized myself with over several years through planning commission and now as a council member. I am aware of and acknowledge the fact that my decisions must be based on merit. Members are still, still base our decisions on the merits and substance of the matter at hand, in this case, the appointment of this seat, rather than unrelated conditions. Which is how I am viewing the, this application process, looking at two applicants both with experience, but the bottom line for me is one possesses much greater. And so, from the scientifically minded among us, that's the data I see before us. For the educators among us. We can even toss around a rubric for a moment. One gets a solid four, but the other gets five. Very, you know, almost synonymous with one of the letters we just heard, this is this is an application process wherein we should pick the best person for the job based purely on their experience and what they can contribute to the city and that's where I stand in favor of, because of the aforementioned criteria and conditions. Where I stand in favor of Louise Getzel and believe she is the best candidate for the vacant seat. And on that matter, my heart is firm and my conscience approves my action and I shall yield, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, council member Uwe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for everyone who went here to share your views and opinion. I've been really like receiving other letters and emails except for Emma. So I'm gonna dig again in my inbox, because it's like a lot that I receive and and it's a very diverse, varied opinion and and it's something beautiful because in our community we accept everyone's views in here and everyone is respectful and civil. And I'm very, really like so thankful tonight that we have shown that. And 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 I really like, I still have really the hope and for the beautiful people of the Oaks, that we'll be able to really like, be able to have a consensus in here in our council, that we will be able to make an agreement. And based on your arguments, you have good arguments and they have merits. But of course, we have to really weigh each argument and and that's really very hard to do for us who are here at the dice. And 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 we really appreciate your input for all of your arguments because I've seen really like different angles that you have seen and you have enlightened me in in all of your sharing with your emails and also conversation and I appreciate that. And we have really like heard many, many points for Mr. Ragsdale Cronin and for Louise Getzel. And and I hear those. We all have really like our priorities and we have our own values and and we always hold things more important than the others and and it's just like a matter that as a city, I'll come to really like look at our core value, core values. And so at this point, Mr. Mayor, I thank you for giving me this opportunity and and I'm gonna, I hope we're gonna have more discussion tonight in our deliberation, not only like our introduction, introductory pieces right now, but we can really like talk.
This, this is your opportunity.
Yes, yeah, so and and for me, of all of the arguments that I have heard and read, I still feel strongly for Mr. Ragsdale Cronin and because of all the inputs that we, that we got from tonight and also from from my readings that were submitted to the city hall. I still feel strongly for Mr. Ragsdale Cronin. I I don't discredit Ms. Louise Getzel, she has really like done great things for our city. However, there's really like a better candidate and it's really against my conscience to have my vote to someone who I see or perceive, you know, like secondary, so because the Oaks deserve the best candidate for our fifth seat. And and that's all, I can say, they deserve it.
Thank you, you're welcome to show.
Thank you. I just want to start off by clarifying the, my motion again at the beginning of January, we were talking about process for appointments. How would we go about that? And one of the options was a direct appointment. And I felt like since we just held an election, paid for an election, we should use those results in our decision. And so the process goes to appoint a person who got the votes, it happened to be Allison Purr and then subsequently Louise Getzel, if she, if Allison Purr did not want it. So it wasn't necessarily of both people, it was, it was a process that was based off of our electoral results. I felt like we had those and why not use them? So it wasn't again necessarily for a person, but it was for the process. And that was, that was voted down. And so now we are in a new process. And this new process provided us with applicants and so now we look at all of these applicants in a new light. And now I can compare these applicants with each other because that's, that's my, that's my job to do. So so since the last meeting, there's been a lot of residents who've been reaching out to me to talk both about their disappointment in watching the last meeting, but also share their thoughts on the candidates. After these discussions, my resolve for supporting Bill Ragsdale Cronin is stronger than ever. This was due to the fact that people felt that he did a good job in his interview and they felt he'd be a good fit for our council. Further supporting my decision was listening to the many conversations I had with residents from the Oaks who were not happy with Miss Getzel's leadership on the HOA board and did not want to see her appointed to the state and seat. As a council, all of us, this is what we agreed to in our second meeting. We identified these core values of diversity and inclusiveness, fiscal responsibility, open communications and transparency, and responsiveness to community needs and concerns. Those were the areas that we were going to use to evaluate our candidates, we all agreed on that. And the information that I gained in talking to residents from the Oaks shows that Miss Getzel has applied negligent in all of those categories in her leadership reviews and the core values. So this information along with her interview leads me to know that I will not support placing her in the vacancy on the council. In regards to Bill Ragsdale Cronin, residents reached out to me to share that they are in support of this candidacy. He's a self-identified centrist and is interested in representing all the citizens of VRO. In terms of diversity and inclusiveness, I think he realizes that it's not just about acknowledging differences within our community in terms of genders, cultural preference, race or ethnicity, but it's about embracing and celebrating these differences. This is what our core value definition states. I do know that Bill is the kind of guy that will get along with just about anyone and and have hardest given decisions, discussions, sorry, that will inevitably have strong opinions on on both sides. In terms of his fiscal responsibilities, he's got experience in this area and wants to work on using our money wisely to enhance the city. In terms of open communications and transparency, he expressed comfort in his to communicate with everyone. He's honest, open about his thoughts and knows that communication is important. In terms of his responsiveness to community needs and concerns, Bill's lived here long enough to understand the big things on our plate moving forward. Settling our long-term debt and looking at sustainable development and housing for all levels of need on our core property. I do not want to put our city through another election for this vacancy. Originally, Bill was not my first choice candidate, but I believe he will serve our city very well and we should open things tonight to so can see. I hope my colleagues can take this information they learned over these past two weeks and also come to the same conclusion. I feel we owe it to our residents to make a decision tonight so that we can move forward and start doing good work for the city.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank everyone who provided comments here today in the chambers and also written comments that you heard read into the record, I know that's difficult. I also thank everyone for your emails, your letters, your texts that you sent to me. Offering your guidance, your feedback. I really appreciate it and I take it all into consideration. The first thing I want to do is apologize to the four applicants that went through their consideration and all four of you were here today. Like I said before, all of you were qualified and had the experience to serve on this council and I, I meant that. And you also showed that you care and you're passionate about the city and the people who live here. But somehow you were left to feel like you were unfit or unworthy and nothing could be farther from the truth. I know a lot of you are thinking, why is this so contentious and difficult and taking so much time? And it's because the makeup of this council determines the direction that the city will go. And it impacts almost everything we do. We can give you some highlights. The development. It will determine how that looks or even if any development happens at all. It determines the content of the four tag supplemental agreement and the effects that it will have on residents. The handling of debt payments, potential sale of city property. It even goes down into individual issues, the hiring and firing city staff and the appointment of individuals to the planning commission and the various committees that we have. And I know residents are passionate about those issues. And they want the people that they voted for to influence the decisions that are made about those issues. And they want those elected officials to fight. And you've seen that play out. I know there's been a lot of interpretation about the results of the last election. One thing's clear, the majority wanted to change in the mayor's position. And along with it, the means to make that change. That majority doesn't envision me handing over control of the council to a group of individuals that were loyal to my predecessor. And they expect me to fight too. And that's what I've done. So two candidates remain. Both are as qualified and capable as the four that dropped out of this process. In addition to their personal attributes, there's a perception, in the case of Mr. Ragsdale Cronin, that he represents the last piece to achieve a majority on this council. With Miss Getzel, you heard as well that she had support of two council members for a direct appointment. And support from one of those council members during the campaign in November. But no longer has that support. So for those reasons, we're deadlocked. I'm very aware of the impact that this is having on the city and the divisiveness that it's creating. And the potential cost to go to an election and the election fatigue that will happen. And just like you, I'm not happy and it doesn't make me feel good to see what has happened in council chambers and amongst neighbors within our community. So I've had a chance to reflect on what that means to me as your mayor. And ultimately, it's to do what's best for the city as a whole. And all things considered, with your feedback and from the council, I think the best thing for the city is to put this behind it. Bill, Mr. Ragsdale Cronin, I'm putting my trust and confidence in you. And I hope you'll make decisions based on what's best for the city. You'll be your own person and not follow in condition with it. And most importantly, you'll be willing to compromise in the future like I have tonight. So with that said, I will accept the motion to nominate Mr. Bill Ragsdale Cronin to fill the vacant council seat.
And who we, you appoint Bill Ragsdale Cronin to be vacant.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
There's a second.
Okay, we have a second, is there any further discussion? I'll start with councilman Halleck.
No further discussion, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, council member Uwe?
I, I just thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that.
Council member Shirley?
Mr. Mayor, I also want to thank you. That was, that was bold to do that. Shows integrity. And I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, Karen, roll call vote.
Council member Uwe?
Aye.
Council member Halleck? Council member Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Donaldson?
Aye.
So motion passed, it's three to one. What I'd like to do at this point, I know we have What I'd like to do at this point, I know we have the oath of office that needs to be given and also the paperwork and signs I'll hand over to the city manager.
You want the front, center, in front of the board?
Right here.
Right here, you got it. I'm a, I'm a good alderman.
Thanks. You raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, William Ragsville Cronin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States. And allegiance.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties I'm about to enter.
The duties I'm about to enter.
Okay, if you'll notice on the agenda, we had a closed second item, but because our city attorney could not be here, that will be continued until the next meeting. And the next meeting will be Tuesday, February 28th at 6:00 PM. And with that, we are adjourned.